Okay. This will be the joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, October 7th, 2008. Ms. Buchanan, could we hear the roll call?
Council members Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Yusefian.
Here.
Neil Drayman.
Here, and that was for council.
For the redevelopment agency, please.
Agency members Drayman.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Yusefian.
Here.
Chairman Najarian.
Here.
Thank you very much. Could we hear the report, please?
The agenda for the October 7th, 2008, joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency was posted on Thursday, October 2nd, 2008, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you very much. And could we also hear the two items that we have?
Item one, Director of Planning Regarding Amendments to the Downtown Specific Plan. Item one A is a council motion providing direction to staff.
Okay. And could we hear item two as well?
Item two, Director of Public Works and Development Services Regarding San Fernando Road Corridor Landscape Improvement Project Phase Three at 2A1, I'm sorry, at 2A is a council motion increasing contingency reserves for the construction contract for Los Angeles Engineering, Inc., from $474,000 to $1,289,000. And 2B, an agency resolution appropriating $1,300,000 to provide funds for the project.
Okay. And Mr. City Attorney, pardon me, you switched chairs while I looked away. I'm sorry, Ms. Van Miden, pardon me. Just for housekeeping purposes, item 1A and item 2A are council motions, and 2B is an agency business, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
But we need to add that these are two separate and distinct items that need to be handled separately, at least.
Right. No, the clarification was not whether they could be acted on simultaneously, just to clarify which are council items and which are agency items. Okay. All right. Well, who are we going to?
I believe if we're going to the downtown specific plan, that would be me, Alan Loomis, Principal Urban Design.
All right. Mr. Loomis, if you would.
What I just handed to you is an existing, the map of the downtown specific plan as it was adopted in November of 2006. Earlier this year, we began discussions about some possible options for amending certain areas of the specific plan. We came to the council and agency earlier this summer with some options. At that time, the council and agency said we'd like opportunity for further discussion and input on these items. So that is the purpose of today's study session. I have a few slides to go through that illustrate some of the options. I think probably it'd be most efficient if I could move through them and then take questions and input.
Yes, well, to follow our normal pattern, Mr. Loomis, we'll go through your presentation and then we'll hold all of our comments and questions and input for the end.
Okay. I will try to make the presentation as short and painless as possible.
Thank you. Could we also, when we do move to the screen, could we get the lights as well?
Let me get the screen up. Well, while we're pulling the screen up, there were, of the various options we discussed, one was some minor text amendments, cleaning up some language in the specific plan. There was consensus, I believe, last time from the council and agency that that should be done. The other items, which are part of the presentation today, they were subject to further discussion. So there are five distinct options to consider?
Is one of the five distinctions to consider how we got our projector working?
I think already stole the batteries, just to give it to you.
Should we jump up and, I sometimes have to do that? When I'm teaching and...
Yeah, something came up. Light on the side looks like.
There we go.
Thank you.
The first discussion was an option to amend the incentives in the specific plan. The specific plan has a variety of incentives that allow for heightened density bonus. There was a suggestion to include arts galleries, spaces, art gallery spaces, museums, exhibit halls as one of those incentives. So that's being presented. The proposal is to allow one additional floor of height bonus for projects that include gallery spaces and allow an FAR increase equivalent to the square footage of the exhibit space. In effect, the art space would be sort of considered free space in terms of density calculations. That would be a good incentive for existing, or for proposed developments. For existing buildings that would want to take advantage of this incentive, they wouldn't be able to. So we're suggesting that we would eliminate the parking requirement for art and gallery spaces in the downtown specific plan. That would allow existing buildings to take advantage of this incentive. The obligation to utilize this incentive would be that the proposed development would need to enter into a development agreement with the city that would lock in the terms of the operation hours, the duration of that gallery space, how long it would last. It'd be very similar to the kinds of development agreements you would enter into for hotel operators or affordable housing. There would be no obligation as to where this exhibit space would be located, either within the building. It'd be either ground floor or on the roof deck and anywhere distributed to the building. The second amendment that had been discussed was some modification to the Alex Theater District heightened density standards. The Alex Theater District is the 200 and 300 blocks of Brand Boulevard. It's what is really the sort of existing two and one-story mid-brand area surrounding the Alex Theater District. The specific plan restricts the height to two stories to a maximum of three stories in these two blocks. And the intent is really to maintain the existing historic context of the Alex Theater where the spire of the Alex Theater is really the dominant visual feature in mid-brand. So when we last met, we had recommended against modifying the heightened density standards in the 200 block between Wilson and California, which is the block of the Alex Theater. We suggested that if you were interested in considering any kinds of amendments or changes, we limit that north of California in the 300 block. And at the maximum, we'd suggest a four to six-story amendment change. That would be commensurate with the properties on the opposite sides of the alleys facing Orange and Maryland. This would limit the amount, the sort of mid-brand area really ultimately only to the 200 block. So the policy discussion, I think, is how much of Brand Boulevard should be the old, have this sort of historic context of mid-brand, where it should be one block or perhaps two blocks or a block and a half. This would allow new development capacity into the downtown specific plan and therefore would require additional review under the California Environmental Quality Act. Potentially involve revisiting the original environmental impact report. Another third amendment that had been discussed and had been presented at one point during our discussions earlier this year was what to do with properties and projects that were half in the downtown specific plan and half out of the downtown specific plan. Along the south side of Colorado, the west side of Central, there are a variety of parcels where that situation could occur. This results in a project having to meet, on one side, the downtown specific plan development standards, and on the other side, the development standards in the existing multifamily zones. As you can see on this slide, there's actually a fairly big difference between the heightened density issues as well as setbacks and required open space, and in fact also in who is the design review authority for these projects. A suggestion was made that we allow projects that are half in and half out to be built according to the downtown specific plan standards. The advantage of this, this would potentially affect all those properties shown in yellow on the map. The advantage of this is that it would allow for consistent design standards for those projects. The disadvantage is that this really does allow the boundaries of the downtown specific plan to increase incrementally, project by project, and without necessarily a kind of consistent oversight. This would definitely require an additional level of environmental impact review. The fourth discussion was to increase FARs, the Florio Ratio, which regulates density in the downtown specific plan. Depending on where you are in the downtown specific plan, that ratio is 2.0 to 7.5. Based on the projects that we've seen, we think we could actually increase this by 0.5 throughout the entire downtown specific plan with no increase in height. That would allow some additional density to be built in the specific plan. This would, of course, also require sequel review. To give an illustration of what this might mean, I looked at the 416 project under construction right now down on Broadway. This is a four-story building as it's being built, that 118 units. It's a little bit under the allowed density by the specific plan as it is written today. If we were to increase the Florio Ratio, this project potentially could be increased by 53 units. And finally, the other suggestion was to increase the Florio Ratio by 1.0, only in certain districts where the specific plan is actually desires and calls for new development and redevelopment. Those are the areas highlighted in red. It's the Gateway District, sometimes known as the Financial District, surrounding the freeway. The Orange Central District, which is the corridor running down Central to Broadway, Broadway Center, which is where the City Center One Tower is located today. And the Maryland District, which is basically the Exchange and the Marketplace. We think we could increase the FAR here by 1.0. Again, no increase in height without compromising the original design policies of the specific plan. Again, we looked at a couple of the projects you've seen lately as an example of what might happen. The Alexander, which is at 185 North Orange, was entitled 16 stories and 200 condo units. If it was able to take advantage of this additional density, it could be increased by 35 units. City Center Two was a 20-story, two 20-story buildings, at 884 condo units, 117 hotel rooms. Taking advantage of this, only about 16 more units or another 32 hotel rooms. These projects so far have been built pretty close to the existing allowed limit. Verdugo Gardens was actually on 610 North Central.
They've only been planned, nothing's been built.
That's, but thank you for the correction. Verdugo Gardens was planned considerably under the allowed entitlement by the DSP, so this project could actually be significantly increased by 138 units. It's worth noting here that this project sort of shrunk in size a little bit between its Stage One and Stage Two entitlements because they reduced the average unit size. Louise Gardens, which is the residential component of the DPSS renovation, was built, entitled at six stories, right at the allowed limit, 3.0 FAR. If we were to increase the FAR, this potentially could go up by 21 units. I should note that all of these projects are actually building a decent amount of the parking above grade, and that actually is one of the limiting factors, as much as FAR is their ability to provide parking for these units. The final example we looked at is the project you've most recently seen and actually considered just the ENA for, which is the Hyatt Place Hotel by Comar Development at Wilson and Central. This is an interesting illustration because this project came in for Stage One review after we began the discussion with the council about potential amendments to the specific plan. So they actually designed this project within the height limit, but considered the possibility that the council would raise the FAR from 5.2 to 6.2. So this project is 11 stories, but actually designed a 6.1 FAR. And what it illustrates is that reasonably well is that the FAR limits could be increased without dramatically impacting the density and livability at the street level of these particular projects. This one is actually setback from Wilson, has a park, not exactly a park, but a dining patio located on the corner of Central and Wilson. Additional setback on the north side. So there would actually be no change in this project should we consider these amendments. So with that, these are the five amendments we're seeking direction from the council on. We would like to hear your input. If there is consensus on this, we'd move forward with the appropriate analysis and bring them back. So with that, I'm finished. Thank you.
All right. Let's go to, I don't have any cards, by the way, on any of this. So let's go to the council and see where we are.
Put that slide back up again. Thank you. Is that a helipad sitting up there? Yep.
I believe it is.
And I suggest that it get, as it gets to design, that it's designed so it'll please the redevelopment agency in terms of what it's going to look like. We do not want to go through that again.
No, we don't.
Just couldn't miss it.
Did you have anything else, Mr. Weaver, while we're?
No, we've had these discussions and it looked like things being suggested aren't really increasing. You say in there, potential increases, that's assuming it's all apartments or condos? Is that?
Right. For those existing projects, the potential increase would be what that project could have been had it been designed according to those standards.
If the developer in the future wants to build all condos or apartments. If they don't, then the potential will never be realized, correct?
Under those scenarios, that's correct. But we could also see as hotels or office or retail.
Yeah, could be something else.
Right.
I'm comfortable with it because I think you said that the impact by making these changes were going to not be significant at all and would be more in line with what you've seen that's come through the office.
That's right. One caveat would be that we would need to do some level of environmental review and determine.
Oh, yes, yes.
The additional density, what that impact would be.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Quintero.
I am specifically interested in B, the incentives for museums, art galleries and exhibit spaces. I think that's a very, very good idea. And I think that over time, that is going to make especially mid-brand a much more desirable place for Glendale residents, shoppers, and for the businesses themselves that are currently housed there. So I think that's a great, great idea. The adjacent zones, C, I'm okay with that, although I do think that, you know, the south side of Colorado, for instance, I think that's a very good idea. I'm not quite so sold on the west side of Central because that does, that is adjacent to.
Multifamily.
Multifamily zones and quite a few single-family homes that are still there on some of the streets. So on the west side of Central and however, south of Colorado, absolutely, I think that's a very good idea. And the area north of the Alex, I think is a very good idea. We need to do something there. Increasing the Florio Area Ratio throughout the DSP, I'm kind of flexible on that. I'm not sure that we necessarily have to do that, but I'm all right. But the idea of certain select districts, the Gateway District, Orange, Broadway, Maryland, I think that's, that's a very good idea. I think we need to do that. And I would just like to comment that, boy, if ever, the word planning, we're just planning, but we're sort of planning in a, well, I guess a good way to put it would be we're planning in the eye of a hurricane. Because who's going to build what in the coming years is kind of beyond me. But anyway, that's what we need to do for the future, so all things will pass and this economic downturn will eventually pass. My comments.
Thank you. Mr. Najarian.
Couple of comments I have. Number one, I'm in favor of the museum incentives, number one. The, the report, the paragraph written in the report, page three of five, has me somewhat confused when we talk about the Alex Theater District. Saying the proposed amendment would increase the restriction north of California to manage the adjacent mid-Orange and transitional districts. Does that, shouldn't it read the proposed amendment would lessen the restriction? I mean, north of the Alex.
That would be the proper way of saying it.
Okay, we're giving them up to six feet.
Lessen it, yeah, to six stories.
I'm sorry?
From three stories to six stories.
To six, okay. So as far as that is concerned, I'm okay with that. I do have some problems with the projects that are adjacent to the DSP zones that are partly in and partly out. My gut reaction is that we should take a wait-and-see attitude with those because there's so much that has not been built to the potential that, you know, giving, creating so much potential without seeing how the incremental increase has affected those neighborhoods is a little bit scary. So I'm a little hesitant to go with the DSP adjacent zones, utilizing the DSP standards. On E, if you could explain to me how, when you're increasing the Florio Area Ratio throughout without increasing the height, how do you create that extra floor area without increasing the height? Are you enlargening the footprint of the building or how does that?
That would be the way it would have to happen, is that the footprint of individual floors within the building would have to become larger. One possibility is that for those projects we've seen where parking is located above grade, they would have to put the parking below grade to take advantage of that.
Not really, I mean, for the same reasons about the DSP adjacent, not really crazy about throwing in a lot of extra density, just because I'm not sure, I mean, we all sort of jumped in this together and we saw the concept and staff did a great job of selling us on the entire planning concept of the downtown. And we all sort of, in our own minds, have a vision as how it's going to work. But at this point, until we actually see something on there and see how we can absorb the density that we've already programmed in, I'm a little hesitant to go ahead and increase that at this point. Again, I'm more comfortable with a wait-and-see attitude or perhaps, you know, if someone wants to make a project-by-project appeal to us and explain why they need more density to make a project feasible, I'm more comfortable in handling it that way than to just give it a blanket increase throughout the district. So those are my thoughts.
Mr. Weaver.
I could add, they made a good point. I made an assumption, maybe it's not true. In transitional boarding up to single multifamily, I assumed that anybody brought in staff would be looking at a step affair. You wouldn't, if it was, if we allowed six, you wouldn't necessarily be putting six up. It might be three and six or something if it fits in the path. I'd also be concerned with putting six stories in.
Yes, the.
Central, for instance.
The design guidelines component of the specific plan, do you require buildings in those adjacent zones to sort of step up? So we'd be working with the applicants to make sure that that happens.
Mr. Yusefian.
Clarification, this going to require four votes?
That's correct.
Zone change?
Ultimately, when it comes back.
Let me tell you what, I, I'm for the gallery museums, no problem. Alex Theater District, no problem. I'm not for increasing the FARs on either sides. And only area that I will consider for adjacent properties is south of Colorado and the rest I'm not. Part of also not increasing the FARs is as you make a bigger footprint, you're taking a lot of open space away. The buildings are basically taking all the mass because you're not increasing the height. So we will not have a building that's going to look like this. And you see, part of the reason this looks the way it looks is because we spend a lot of time on discussing the FAR and what it's going to look like. You could see it's kind of in and out and there's a lot of room in there. If you made this 0.30 FAR, it would be more like a box. So I'm comfortable with those items. The rest of it, I tend to say leave it be and see what happens as economy changes in three years or so. A lot of things change between now and then.
Let me just ask my colleagues, I want to run through a couple of things just because I'm trying to keep a box score and I see our friend, Mr. Loomis, is doing the same as to where the consensus lies. And Mr. Yusefian raised a very good point, because of the vote necessary ultimately. Van Miden points out, when this comes back, my personal opinion is that it doesn't make much sense to form a separate consensus, have it come back and then say, hey, oops, well, you know what, now we're going to vote, we need four affirmative votes, so let's start again. So, and also, some of the opinions may have changed as we went down the line and heard some of the arguments one way or the other, or the opinions one way or the other. So, Mr. Weaver, let me start back with you. You are with, in section B in the report, that's the incentives for museums, art galleries and exhibit spaces. If I heard you correctly, you are okay with that.
I'm with that and I presume the 15 feet is because usually it'd be a higher ceiling.
Okay. And Mr. Quintero, I understand you.
Yes.
And Mr. Najarian, you were, and I believe Mr. Yusefian was as well. All right. Item C was to create procedures for projects straddling the DSP and adjacent zones to utilize DSP standards. Mr. Weaver.
You know, comfortable with it, as long as the guidelines protect.
I think your question was about stepping back, stepping the.
Yeah, and I was told that that would happen through the design guidelines.
Okay. Mr. Quintero.
Only on the south side of Colorado.
Colorado, so you were Colorado, south side only. By the way, gents, it's Colorado Boulevard.
Yeah.
Other than Avenue.
It's Colorado Street, isn't it?
Well, we have Colorado Street on one end, Colorado Boulevard on another. I'm not sure which they're specific, but I definitely know it's not Colorado Avenue.
It's in Santa Monica.
That's, yeah.
Right.
I don't know. Sorry.
It's called Colorado.
Okay. Mr. Najarian.
My, I definitely know on, definitely know on the west side of Central for the time being, the current situation. But question is to south Colorado, what is, what's the street immediately south? Is that Elk Street?
That's Elk.
And what do we have on the north side of, excuse me, the south side of Elk? Is it apartments?
Mostly apartments.
On the west side, apartments.
Mr. Hagani.
Hi, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Part of it is in the South Brand specific land, parts of it would be multifamily residential though.
I'm, just to.
Mr. Quintero.
Just to give you some information, most of the commercial properties in Colorado between Brand and Central really run all the way to Elk. I mean, it is pretty much commercial zoning all the way through. There might be one or two, so that's the reason, you know, they literally are going to have ingress from Colorado or from Elk. You think about it, there's Shoe City on the corner, then another equally upgraded Plaza on the, on the south side and Yoshi Noyas Riceville at Gourmet Center on Brand.
Mr. Quintero, familiarly, between Central and Louise, the specific plan already extends down to Elk. It's really only west of Central that this would apply.
Can we get the graphic up there just so I'm clear? So it's elements in yellow?
That's correct. These will be, the elements in yellow would be, are areas outside of the specific plan that would be affected by this. It's worth noting as well that these areas in yellow are outside the design review jurisdiction of the city council and redevelopment agency. They go to the design review board. So at a minimum, we need to clarify that any project that is in this situation, the entire project comes to the city council for any and all discretionary reviews to eliminate a certain kind of schizophrenic, schizophrenia in the review process.
So is that yellow portion, is that the backside of the 416? Oh, no, that's Colorado, I'm sorry.
Colorado, yeah.
Is that the backside of the Armory and the Elks Club?
The Armory and the Elks Club actually are already included in the downtown. The Armory and the Elks Club actually are already included in the downtown's...
You see them?
Lately.
This is Brand right here, so this is...
Immediately north of the yellow there, no, to your right, to the...
To the right.
Yes. What are those sites?
There are a series of retail, currently there are a series of retail and motels and paint store, there's a shoe shop, if you drive there, you'll see, behind them...
All quite old.
Yes.
Mostly in a one-story.
So, if we permit, what would be the height limitation then, if we were to...
In that particular block, the maximum they could build to would be five stories, assuming they package some incentives. Otherwise, they'd be limited to four stories.
Okay. I could, Mr. Mayor, I could probably live with those Colorado portions.
So, similar to what Mr. Quintero was saying, not on the west side of Central, but the south side of Colorado.
Right, I could live with that.
Okay. Mr. Yusefian.
Oh, that's where I'm at.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Yusefian. All right, moving on to item D, that's the modify the north area of Alex Theater District to permit more intense development. Mr. Weaver.
Yeah, I can handle that too. Not all of these, I have my own opinion, but like on the previous item, finance up just Colorado, that's fine, I can understand the differences of opinion. So, I'm okay with the more intense because I don't think it's, that raid is talking about potential, not what actually might happen.
All right, Mr. Quintero.
Yes.
And Mr. Najarian.
Yes, and just, just a, I guess a very basic question. Any sort of development in that area between California and Lexington where it's currently a single story would have to include parking. I mean, it can't be, can't scrape it, put up six stories with the incentives and say, park where you will.
Depending on how they arrange their parking.
I mean, that goes without saying, any, any construction in the area would have to incorporate parking.
They'd have to address the parking.
Address the parking.
One way or another.
Yes, I'm, I'm okay with that.
All right, Mr. Yusefian.
I'm fine.
Okay. All right. Item E, Mr. Weaver, that is the increased floor area ratio throughout the DSP.
Yeah, I don't see how it's going to affect that much, but that, we had a long discussion on that point when we had it here before. So, I'm okay with that too.
All right, Mr. Quintero.
Now that I know there's another vote, I'm going to exercise my veto. I don't know, I, I think it's too early in the game, I'm not exactly, I mean, we're still restricting the height, is that correct?
We're not changing the height restrictions anywhere.
Yeah, so...
It's strictly the FAR.
Yeah, I'm not too comfortable with that.
So, that's a no. Okay. Mr. Najarian.
No.
And Mr. Yusefian.
No.
Okay. All right, and lastly, and lastly, item F, increase the floor area additionally in selected districts, the Gateway District, Orange Central, Broadway Center and Maryland Districts. Mr. Weaver.
I'm okay on that too, but I'd count to five.
Okay. Well, Mr. Quintero.
Yeah, this is a different story. The Gateway is where we currently have the tallest buildings in the city of Glendale.
Correct.
So, I'm, I'm okay with, with the Gateway District. And that's going to be defined, obviously. Okay, now describe Orange Central.
Orange Central is...
Between Orange and Central on the east, on the east side.
That's correct, on the east side of Central.
What do we have now? What's the...
That includes the block with Sears Department Store, the block to the north of that, the Citibank site.
And how many, how many stories is that?
You're allowed to build up to 12 stories depending on how they package incentives for height and density.
Okay, and then the FAR would increase by what, only one point?
Only 1.0.
Yeah, okay, so I'm fine with the Gateway, I'm fine with Orange Central. Then Broadway Center would be along...
It's the south side of Broadway between Central and Brand.
No, I'm not okay with the Broadway Center. I think that would lead to boxier buildings and, and then finally, the Maryland District would be the Exchange...
The Market Place, both sides of Maryland, and also the south side of Brand where the Masonic Temple is located opposite the Americana.
Right, and how many stories there?
Maximum, that's six.
Yeah, no, that's it for me. I'll go for Gateway and Orange Central only, not Broadway or Maryland.
Okay, Mr. Najarian.
I'm, I'm not ready to support in those areas.
Okay. And Mr. Yusefian.
I'm not ready to support. As I said, it does not increase the height, but what it does is you're packing more units to the same envelope, which is increasing more congestion, it's increasing more car trips and so on and so forth. So, that's my logic.
I have a question before I can tell you what I see as consensus overall, and we can check with your box scores too, Mr. Loomis. I have a question about the increased floor area, the increased FAR in these select districts. Specifically, I want to talk about the Maryland District because the, there's been some discussion about particularly the Exchange and the ability to incentivize arts, galleries, restaurants, clubs, plus housing in that area. How will this help or hurt that? Will this help to facilitate that, will it not?
Well, I think the FAR restrictions already allow for some redevelopment, probably fairly modest redevelopment in that district. So, to the extent that somebody's bringing down a building or redeveloping a particular site that could provide more uses on a particular site. Now, if somebody is simply talking about reusing an existing building, just allowing additional height and density for a building that exists, doesn't help.
Okay.
But this is one area where there is, right now, not that much housing and there is some interest in building that as an entertainment district. So, this would potentially help more activity happen in that area, that two-block stretch.
Right. Okay. Well, then, okay, let me tell you where I am with that one. I am supportive of, of all of the districts with the exception of the Broadway Center area. The Maryland Districts, I'd like to include, to leave included for that very reason because this is such an underutilized area and the only way we're going to see that area grow as far as I'm concerned in use is if we incentivize it in some way. Most of what I see there happening with regard to, you know, the intended purpose, the intended hopes there are reuse of existing, but to the extent that we could have some surrounding housing that would then facilitate that use. In other words, bringing people to live in the area where we want them to, to go to galleries, go to restaurants, go to a club, walk to the library, which is just down the street, and the new Central Park, and then out onto Brand and so on, without being able to incentivize that component, I think we miss the boat. So, that being said, let me go back to the beginning and tell you what box scores I have. On item B, I see unanimous consensus as is. On item C, there is consensus on item C, yes, with the condition of not extending out onto the west side of Central, but yes, to the south side of Colorado. You have consensus on that with Quintero, Najarian, Draymond and Yusefian.
And me. I said I'll take what I can get.
Right, right. But I mean, in other words, the rest did not want to include west, the west side of Central.
Oh, no. I mean, there are other areas, I mean, I just don't want to include anything, just those two areas.
What I'm saying is there, those were the statements that specifically didn't want to include those areas. That is what was spoken now.
I think Mr. Quintero said just south of Colorado.
That's what I just said.
But if you look, there's a yellow up there, there's another one yellow up there which is not on Central, it's further.
And we'll ask him to clarify, but what I heard him say was no to the west side of Central and the only area would be that he would support it would be the south side of Colorado. Maybe he meant something else and I'll, whatever he says, I'll...
No, the, to me, Maryland, for instance, I mean, that's basically what you see in yellow there off of, off of Maryland, that's going to totally impact multifamily neighborhoods, just south of Colorado for me.
Right, and that's what I have here, only south side of Colorado and note, specifically no to the west side of Central. Mr. Yusefian, did you want to clarify anything for your own?
Only south side of Colorado and nothing else.
Right, and Mr.? Yeah, I shouldn't, I shouldn't have emphasized west side of Colorado, it's only because, I mean, west side of Central, it's just that everybody used that as an example, so I made a note of it, that's all. So, that is a unanimous item, so that would be a yes, that's item C. Item D, which is the Alex District, you have unanimous consensus or you have a consensus as is. Item E is, you have consensus, the consensus is no there. And item F, we have, let's see, looks like, let's see how we sort this out. Mr. Weaver was a yes, as is, Mr. Quintero was a yes, accepting Broadway Center and Maryland Districts. Councilmember Najarian was a no to all, Yusefian was a no to all, and Draymond was a yes to all but Broadway Center. In other words, I wanted to include the Maryland Districts. So, it looks like...
It loses.
So, it looks like there is no consensus there, it's all over the, all over the lot.
Before, so...
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I clearly, I clearly heard what you said about item...
F.
C, that you would only like to be able to use DSP standards for the properties south of Colorado, but not all of the other yellow areas. However, we would really appreciate it if council could direct us to make zoning code amendments so that if there is a project along, a portion of which is in the DSP area, but another portion of it outside the DSP area, we could still bring those projects to be reviewed under the review authority of the City Council or the agency, as it may be, despite the fact the standards would remain.
I agree with that, so half of it doesn't go to DRB, half of it comes to us, so the whole thing comes to us.
Mr. Najarian, Quintero, Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Yes, you have that direction. Coming back to F, can anybody help me sort out what we, where we were with that? I'm sorry. I have the assistant city manager saying one thing to me and I'm...
We need four votes, so...
Right. So, okay, so we don't have consensus in any direction on that one. All righty. I hope that helps.
Yes, it does. We will bring back the actual text amendments for the DSP to you and begin evaluating what this might mean in a way of environmental impact reports, come back to you with a timeline.
Do you have to put it in the form of a motion?
Uh, hang on one moment, yes, we have...
There is a motion to direct staff.
Yes, there is a motion to direct staff and a motion...
I'll make the motion based on what you have, consensus.
All right, there's your second, there's a motion and a second.
Councilmembers Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yusefian.
Hi.
And Mayor Draymond.
Yes. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item.
Onto item two, direct, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, you've already read it into the record, thank you. All right. Whoop, there he is over there, Mr. Zern.
Still in the dark over there. Nothing new.
You have a, do you have a presentation to make or are you going to...
I do. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Chair, members of the agency, I'm going to have in one second, I'm going to ask Mr. Galanian, our city engineer, give you a brief overview of this, a brief history and to, to talk to you about the challenges we faced.
Brief history?
And the, well, excellent, excellent, Mr. Yusefian, thank you for pointing that out. When I say brief history, let me mark that since this project predates my appointment to this position.
For me being on council?
The history will be from the point several months ago when you gentlemen, this body, redirected staff to expand the project area from what was then an approximate three-foot area that was the public right-of-way, and you asked us to push that back and expand the planting. So, from that point...
We'd like to refer to that as the moment with all the heavy sighing and eye-rolling, so...
That's the history I'm talking about, so that'll be a lot briefer and, and Mr. Galanian will be able to tell you again the challenges that we faced and talk to you a little bit about the item that details the expansion of that project and some of the costs associated with that. He'll bring us up to date. I'm not one to like to tell people how things end, but I think you all know how that ends when we get to today, which is we're not in a position that we'd like to be. We're not a whole lot further along than we were several months ago. And when Mr. Galanian finishes his presentation, talks to you about some of the challenges we still face, we've come up with, with an option or a recommendation that we think will help us get to where we want to get. It may not be 100% of what we had originally anticipated, but I think many of you have seen us whittle this project down and build it back up and whittle it down again, but I think this option will be acceptable to those who own the property that we're trying to, to improve, to the utilities that are the underlying users of that property as well as what we're trying to do, and I think will get us ultimately the aesthetic improvement that we're looking for. So, with that, I will let Mr. Galanian go over the brief history, again, brief, and then we can talk a little bit about the option that we're going to...
All right, Mr. Galanian.
Good afternoon.
Good to see you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Chair, members of the agency, as Mr. Zern noted, a brief on my history and update, basically, as you're aware, this project was originally designed by a consultant with some efforts to do some coordination work with the utilities and Metro. The original plan was for a seven-foot landscaping area, but due to complications that arose in the field and during the negotiation process with the utilities, we had to reduce the landscaping area to three and a half feet behind the curb, basically within the city's right-of-way. So, in September of '07, council awarded a contract to Los Angeles Engineering for the original amount, but consequently, we went back and negotiated for a reduced scope of work with Los Angeles Engineering. On February 15th, the contractor installed the fence post through the entire length of the project, it's approximately just over 5,300 feet and approximately 100 feet of the mesh of the fence. On February 19th, council and agency directed staff to suspend the work because of the reduced scope and directed staff to go back and redesign and renegotiate for a larger landscaping area. The directors, the city manager then started negotiations with MTA and MetroLink. As my note indicates here, on April 4th, we finally received the right of entry from MetroLink, but it came with requirements for additional insurance, additional training and flaggers that the contractor had to provide. In the meantime, we didn't stop the work entirely, the contractor continued working on the bus shelters, the electrical and all the related work that weren't impacted by the landscaping. Two weeks later, Los Angeles Engineering began removing the installed fence posts. On February 22nd, they were finally able to obtain the additional insurance that MetroLink required. We began developing a new fence layout, a review by the directors and negotiations with MetroLink and the utility companies. Then in June, we requested prices from Los Angeles Engineering, this was for a fence at seven feet and 10 feet behind the curb. And we started the design modifications, we started talking to MetroLink and primarily Quest, which was the more vocal of the utility companies about the location of their lines, and they had absolutely no idea where it was. So, they had required that the city pay for potholing to identify location of their lines and to pay for their observers on site full-time. In discussions with the city attorney's office, we were directed not to, that we didn't have to pay for observer and we notified Quest Company and we directed Los Angeles Engineering to go back to work. On July 18th, the contractor attempted to schedule a MetroLink training session. 10 days later, they were able to schedule the training and... Ten days later, they were able to schedule the training, and on August 1st, we received the final revised landscaping irrigation plans for the expanded, uh, section of landscaping. At this point, we, um, consulted with our, um, development service staff, and we were told that the funds that were allocated for this project specifically for the contingency amount, due to urgent need of Flower Street Extension Project, were directed to that project, and that we did not have sufficient funds to pay the contractor. I'd be happy to give you a, an update since August, but the reason we're here today is to request $678,000, this is an estimated amount for the additional work that's required for the expanded area, plus we've added twenty percent in contingency, that adds up to $815,000. Of the original $474,000 contingency that was approved by council and agency, we have only expended $36,000 through two small change orders. So, um, in summary, we need an appropriation in the amount of $1.3 million, that's basically an addition of, that adds up $815,000 we're requesting today, $438,000 of the original remainder of the contingency, plus an additional $47,000 for inspection and construction management. Like I said, I can go through and let you know what happens since August, if you desire, or if you have any other questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Mr. Zern.
Mr. Mayor, member of the council, Mr. Chair, member, members of the agency, let me, let me have one clarification about the transfer of the money. The money was transferred to the Flower Street, but the reason at that time was, we didn't believe that this project was going to rise to this level, we thought at that point the project, uh, wasn't, was going to be within the original budget, so the redevelopment agency went ahead and shifted that money to Flower Street, which was a required, not a requirement, but, but a need we had at the time. Uh, I think it is important that we talk to you about what's occurred since.
You want us to hear the, the August story?
The August story, which continues to be as compelling as, as the rest of the story, but let, let me see if I can do this quickly, Mr. Galanian can certainly cut me off and correct me where, where, where that needs to-
Is he the only one that gets to do that?
No, by all means, that's, that's certainly, uh, your right and to do that. Um, we, we went ahead, as Mr. Galanian said, we had the full backing of the city attorney's office to no longer have to, to, you know, to essentially be told by the, the fiber-optic people that we could or couldn't do this, or we had to do it a certain way. Uh, certainly cognizant of the fact that we didn't want to strike, or upset, or interrupt those utilities, uh, we also thought the conditions they were, we were putting forth were much too onerous. So we did go in and began to pothole, the process of literally hand-digging to try to find these lines, of which the owners don't even have a clue where they're at. They're about four feet, they're about ten feet, they weren't even, even sure. We found, what we found was, the lines are there, they are all over the place, they are at different, different heights, they're at different depths, they meandered to the point that if we were to try to follow that line with the fence, the fence would, in some cases be ten feet, in other cases, we'd be all the way back to our right-of-way. Because the, the pipes and lines and un, even unsheathed, uh, fiber-optic lines, uh, were meandering in such a way. We are required by, by MetroLink and by, I don't know, I think we have another regulatory agency, we have to keep it two, USA, two-foot clearance from the lines. So, at the end of potholing, a pretty extensive amount of, of the area, I don't think it's gonna change if we pothole the whole area, it's, I think these lines continue to snake throughout the right-of-way. What we began to realize was, the real issue here is the fence. It's the fence, it's the fence and the footing for the fence. So amongst us, uh, on staff, uh, and for those of you who've been here long enough to go through this whole thing, may remember, we started off with a beautiful decorative iron fence that got shot down by, by not us, but by others, till we got to finally the standard MTA fence, which, you see it, in my opinion, it's a good security fence, no knock on, on MTA, but it, it's not much more than a, than a sturdy chain link fence. We're gonna completely cover that in vegetation, completely. So, what we're proposing to you is, we eliminate the fence, we go back to a straight landscaped line, we take the ten-foot, uh, project area, plant our shrubs, which I think can get a height of six feet, which MetroLink, you know, is very concerned about heights, being able to see over, I think that gives you visual block from the street, the foliage we'll use will be thick-growing, will actually become a barrier, and, and you may have noticed, there's an existing MTA fence for maybe about seventy-five, eighty percent of, of this area anyway, that goes closer to the tracks for a security measure. Then we can continue to plant the rest of our, our pallet that we've provided you, including the trees. We'll have the, the trees with the larger canopies, the smaller canopies, we have about two hundred trees, I think.
Right.
We will put the root barriers in, that's not a problem, of the lower-growing shrubs with the ground cover in between that, that, uh, that you had asked us to include as well. And all of the indication we have at this point, Mr. Galanian and his staff met with, with MetroLink just recently, and the fiber-optic companies, there isn't a problem with the vegetation, the problems with the fence, and the trees. The deep-rooting trees, the fence, the trees are in our right-of-way, so that's no longer an issue. If we eliminate the fence, I think we can get this done.
If I may add a note-
Mr. Galanian.
The root barriers are already in place, so we don't need to install the new ones.
Happy duty?
Yeah, nine inches.
The course has to be heavier.
Right. And we met with MetroLink and MTA staff yesterday in the field, the only fence requirements they have are behind the bus shelters for safety reasons, for pedestrian safety reasons, and we may be able to extend it across the street for aesthetic purposes, across the cross-sections, cross-streets, I'm sorry.
Which would still be our right-of-way.
At the intersections, and we'll cover it with vines. And there's about two hundred feet of the existing fence that they like repaired, and we've agreed to that.
Um, let me start with my colleagues, Mr. Weaver, you had your hand up first.
Yeah, the root barrier, you say it's already in?
Right.
Since it's meandering from almost the curb to ten feet out, does the root barrier have to be under the entire area, or what, what portion does it have to be under that's already in now?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Weaver, it's in our public right-of-way, we set that in our right-of-way, the trees will be in our right-of-way, and that's where we had approval to put the root barrier. So we're catching the root barrier, uh, in our public right-of-way, which is a straight shot, or, let's put it this way, it's pretty straight, as Mr. Yusefian pointed out, the curb, uh, isn't as straight as, as an arrow, but that is an unobstructed area where there are no fiber-optic, uh, or other utilities.
So, second question, just to understand, line of sight, MetroLink requires, the train tracks are elevated over San Fernando, the engineer sitting up there is even up higher, what is he expecting to see by keeping the shrubs down to six foot, San Fernando Road?
Six, six and a half foot people. Mr. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Yusefian, they, they like to have as long a sight distance as they can to the next intersection, so they're looking all the way ahead, anticipating what's going to occur at that intersection.
It's, it's not between, it's when they get near, they want to, it to open up so they can see people or cars potentially coming our front.
That's, that's the main, the main issue, but again, a, as well, if you have any kind of activity or people who are starting to mingle around the track area, they, they try to limit the obstruction so that they can see that and see it as soon as possible.
One last question, if you add up MetroLink and Caltrans, all utilities, how many a number have we had to deal with?
Mr. Weaver, how many number of utility companies?
Utilities plus the railroads.
Seven to eight.
So when people wonder what the heck we've gone through, why'd you get it done? Did you try to get seven or eight agencies all to sit down and agree? Next impossible.
And Mr. Mayor, uh, Councilmember Weaver, just to add to, uh, indicated, at the intersections, because of the line of sight issues, we plan not to install trees, 'cause that's an impediment to their sight.
Mr. Quintero.
Um, if this is approved today, when will the crews for this company be there full-time doing the planting and so forth?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Quintero, currently, because of the stop-and-go situation, they've, they've also contracted eleven new projects, uh, however, we've been in constant contact and negotiations and plan review with them, they should be able to start work within two weeks. Uh, we have the landscaping irrigation plans ninety percent complete, the only thing we're gonna do is extend some of the seven-foot irrigation lines on, to become ten-footers, and the planting scheme they have, it's approved, once we get direction from council and agency, we'll direct them to start.
If they start, uh, two weeks from, uh, today, uh, when will they be completed? When will they be doing their final cleanup?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Quintero, uh, the landscaping should be completed within forty-five working days, it's our estimate, that's two and a half calendar months, give or take another two or three weeks for cleanup, they should be done within three, three and a half months.
Okay, so today, the beginning of October, we can see that, uh, train, or, what it, no, the light, we can see the light at the end of the tunnel, that means that, uh, I'm gonna be even kinder, I would say sixty days from now, and I'm gonna drive along San Fernando Road and say, wow, look at that, that's a nice specimen, because the trees are eight to ten feet, uh, specimens, and oh, wow, look, and there might even be rain at that point in time, by December, there should be rain, so, um, I'm expecting nothing but, uh, I've been disappointed for seven years, but, actually, I shouldn't say that, I was very optimistic for a number of months, almost a year, and it was just around the corner, that light at the end of the tunnel, but now, um, Mr. City Engineer, your formal title, you're telling the redevelopment agency and the city council that literally within sixty days, there's gonna be green along San Fernando Road.
Oh, you're inspired?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Quintero, in sixty days from now, there will be some landscaping planted, may not be the entire project, but you will see some greenery.
Well, what do you mean by that?
There'll be trees and shrubs.
I think the question was, when do we anticipate the project will be completed and everything cleaned up?
Yeah.
So that he can drive down and say, look-
Yeah, the land, the, uh, ground cover will take a while to fill in and so forth, obviously, but-
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Quintero, it, oh, really, it depends on how soon LA Engineering can remobilize.
Okay.
That's why I estimate two weeks from now, but we'll press them to start as soon as possible.
And the money is just gonna come from another redevelopment account, correct?
That is correct, our undesignated fund balance.
It's one of his other coats, it has another big patch pocket over here. Mr. Weaver, you forgot something.
Assuming no inclement weather, that's a caveat, and secondly, with the construction going on at Flower, and the flyover, and the construction workers on that area, you are not gonna be able to complete the landscaping in those two zones until the flyover is done and Flower is in, correct? You can't, you can't plant right up to it.
Mr. Zern.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Weaver, the Flower Street project, the landscape is included with that, they'll, they'll take care of it.
Oh, they'll do the same landscaping pattern.
This will go right up to the project area.
Up to the limits of the construction.
Right, Flower Street will do theirs.
As you do have a construction even at both.
Right.
Correct.
And Flower, the same thing?
Yes.
Yes.
They'll come in and do it.
Later, talk.
Mr. Najarian.
Um, Mr. Howard, Ms. Van Mine, what type of conflict do I have, if any, to discuss this item? As it relates to my positions on MetroLink and MTA?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Chairman, members of the agency, it would be a potential common law bias claim if you were essentially being beholden to two masters, I don't know if there's any conflict, I think we've got the issues resolved with MetroLink and MTA?
Just a mayor, Mr. Howard, we're close to our final negotiations.
And, and I guess the next question I would have is, what role does the board play in either the issuance of a right-of-way permit and/or approval of the, uh, this entire contract, or reviewing the, the plans and having some approval, or is it strictly a ministerial staff?
Well, the issue is safety at this point, and what I'm hearing is because we want to plant trees, we've got to remove the fence? Well, we're removing the fence, we're not planting a fence.
So what do you remove?
Mr. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Najarian, that's what we're proposing, because it has been so difficult to try to set the fence and to set it on a line, for instance, a ten-foot line. It's not necessarily what the MTA is telling us, it's where we're trying to get it so that we fit it within where the fiber-optic underground utilities are. The, the MTA lease that we have with them allows us to go to ten feet, but it also says we have to abide by the underground utilities, underlying utilities in the area, so they're, they're not dictating it to us, they're letting us have the ten feet, but it's the meandering in underground utilities that are causing us, put a fence line in, it is so erratic, I, I would, I would recommend we just eliminate it.
Okay, my, and that's my problem, we're talking about railroad tracks, one of the most highly congested rail corridors in the entire United States, that transports Amtrak trains, Union Pacific freight trains, uh, MetroLink trains several times a day at high speeds, adjacent to residential neighborhoods, adjacent to Pellicone Park, uh, there's gonna be no physical barrier keeping kids away from walking up to the tracks, I have a real problem with that.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Najarian, as I mentioned, about, in the area we're working, which is close to 2.1 miles, I, I think it is, there, about eighty percent of that already has an existing fence that's closer to the tracks, they, they, the MTA's already installed a safety fence that's about thirty feet from the tracks, towards the, the curb, towards the street, same safety fence, they have it. Now, in the remaining areas, um, my understanding is they want to continue to put fencing in, and quite frankly, we happen to own quite a bit of fencing right now, and we're gonna offer to sell that to them, uh, as well, but already there's a fence.
So if there was already fencing, why were we even talking about fence, whether it's seven foot or ten?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Najarian, it was all aesthetics, it was a decorative fence, we started out with-
Support the climbing vegetation?
Actually, it was an iron, it was an iron fence, it first was some level of vegetation to get a look, we had some mounds, I don't know if you remember that, we had some vet, some, uh, landscape mounds, and the idea was, we were blocking the tracks visually, but not from a security standpoint, it was never about security, that was something that the MTA had handled, we were looking for an aesthetic upgrade to the street, and something that would block, uh, the tracks to cer, you'd still be able to see a train, no doubt, but at least the railroad track area would be blocked. That fence was denied, as I said, and we were required to put in the standard MTA fencing, but again, wasn't a security issue, 'cause they already have a fence up.
Okay.
Now the secu, yeah, I just want, so you're, I want you to be comfortable, as Mr. Galanian said, there are a couple of areas where they asked us to put some fencing for safety issues, and that is behind the bus shelters.
A double fence, so to speak?
Yeah, it will be, yes.
Okay. Um, that makes me feel better. So, let me get to the aesthetics.
Mr. Mayor, may I just add a note to what Mr. Zern said, as I indicated earlier, yesterday, verbally, representatives from MetroLink and MTA agreed to no double fence.
Okay, I'm good with that. So in terms of what this initial project was, was to screen the, the railroad from the neighborhood, uh, by sound and by sight, uh, what sort of vertical, uh, components are we gonna have, besides the trees, that are gonna be able to substitute what would otherwise have been growing on a fence?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Najarian, we are looking, we're working with a landscape architect to come up with a, a denser shrub that will provide a six-foot tall hedge.
Oleanders.
Hopefully something more attractive, but you're thinking along the lines of what, what the, what it would be like, a very hardy, dense, something that gets up to, uh, to about six feet, that we can maintain, uh, like a nice manicured hedge, that will provide the aesthetic, it's not something that I anticipate you could, you know, walk through, it would be very difficult to do that, so it is at some level of, of deterrent.
And please tell me the total cost anticipated for the entire project, much of that was attributed to false starts and, and starting over and digging where we didn't have to dig, and removing the fence posts and all that.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Najarian, to date, we have spent-
Wasted money, I wanna call that wasted money, that went to no productive-
With all due respect, I wouldn't call it entirely wasted, because we have installed bus shelters, we've run some electrical lines-
Hey, don't count that, that's not wasted.
...root barriers, so, out of the one and a half million that we spent, probably half of it was to reduce, remobilization, potholing, extensive, every fifty-foot hand-digging, and the fence that we've purchased and- and the fence that we've purchased and now own, we hopefully trying to sell it back to MetroLink.
So, half of one-point-three million?
Something in that range, and we haven't seen the...
Seven-fifty thousand.
We haven't seen the latest invoice from the contractor, they had originally said that delays are going to cost the city two thousand dollars a day, but I think that was just a threat for us to move faster, but I don't think they're going to submit a bill to that. Hopefully, they will not submit it, but they're entitled to.
I will support this, but I am deeply upset that we have spent that much money needlessly, fruitlessly. That's a lot of money, and you saw our study session today, we're counting nickels and pennies and, you know, ten percent parking tax here, and transit occupancy tax there, and it's just, we just can't, we just can't do this anymore, as an organization as a whole. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, Mr. Yusefian.
I'm hoping, Mr. Galanian, you will get this thing done before I leave this council, okay? So, give us a nice Christmas present, how's that? That gives you to Christmas. I'm for this, I'm not happy that we spent almost seven-hundred thousand dollars, but if it gets done, at least the community gets something. You may want to look at miniature oleanders also. They do have them, they grow to about six feet max, you don't have to trim them, they just get a little bit bushy this way, so you can chop them, but they don't get too high. They give you a lot of flowers, they come in pink and yellow and orange and all different colors, and very hardy, very hardy. Fine, just do it.
All right. I have a couple of questions also. I don't think any of us are happy, by the way, about the cost of doing this. Argument could be made, had we had all of the information to start with, maybe this amount of money wouldn't have been spent, if there hadn't been so many false starts, this amount of money wouldn't have been spent. I think the goal has been, certainly has been since I've been here, and I know it has been since before I was here, to get it right. Unfortunately, when this came forward, at least since I've been here, the issue has been not really getting, you know, the lead's been buried so many times on this story, that a lot of the funds went to trying to pothole where the actual lead in this story is. Hopefully, we know now. I have some questions, though, about this. We talk about twenty-four-inch box trees, accent trees, mature trees, the height varies, what are we actually planting out there? Because some of the things we plant in the city, we say, yeah, when this is a mature tree, it will be ten feet in height, et cetera, et cetera, but we plant something that won't be a tree in any of our lifetimes, it's basically a...
Push.
A not even, I mean, it's a tree trunk that's the diameter of your ring finger, and so maybe in forty years, it will be a real tree, but, so I want to know what we're actually going to plant out there, because when I look at this, I see a very nice drawing that sort of gets to the idea of what we had hoped to do, where we have tall shrubs in front of a fence that are, you know, three to five feet high, accent trees, mature height varies from ten to thirty feet, but, and then we have some, those are the accent trees, and then the canopy trees are also twenty-four-inch boxes, and they're from, you know, ten to thirty feet when mature, but what are we actually putting out there?
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, twenty-four-inch boxes would be the standard tree that you'd see us plant as a new tree in the parkway, so it's a fairly small tree, it's probably, oh, somewhere in an inch to an inch and a half diameter, maybe. What we did ask our arborists in helping us with this, and it was what the consultants originally were looking at, too, were rapid-growing trees. So, these trees are supposed to mature very quickly, at least get to a point where they don't look like a sapling for four or five or six years. They grow rapidly the first two to three years, certainly takes a while to get to full maturity, but we're expecting to see something that resembles a true tree in a relatively short time. What I will do, to be sure, is if you would like, I can take pictures of what nursery stock looks like in a twenty-four-inch box, I can give you dimensions of those, and then I can give you growth scales on those for first three years, which is always critical, and then the three- to five-year period.
Well, that would be, I think, very helpful, not only for my colleagues, but also for the public, because I know where this is going. In the past, when I've seen two-foot box trees planted in our city, you mentioned parkways and sidewalks and so on, the public, you know, because the tree was injured, the previous tree, or it was diseased or what have you, had to come out, and it's replaced, there's an expectation you're going to see a tree, and I know what the public reaction's going to be, you're giving us this, this will never be a tree in twenty years, thirty years. I'll be raising my grandchildren in this house before we see anything that looks like a tree. The other thing is the fence, the jasmine vines that are here. No, this is on their fence, is it not?
No, no, that would be eliminated, that was part of our fence.
So, the fence that's back there that belongs to them, which is the sort of glorified chain link, the idea then is the tall shrubs are going to hopefully one day obscure the fact that we have a chain-link fence back there.
That's correct.
Okay.
As I stated, it won't block an entire train, but it certainly, as long as there's a train not there, you won't see the tracks, and some of the other equipment that's associated with the railroad use, whether it's their switch boxes and so forth.
And those tall shrubs, those are going to be the same concept as our trees, will they look like tall shrubs, or will they look like ground cover for a while, a number of years before they get tall enough to...
I'm not sure, Mr. Mayor, the exact gallonage is what we're proposing to plant, but I can tell you the shrubs will grow rapidly, much more quickly than the trees, and will begin to develop into that hedge-like, especially if we went to something like, as Mr. Yusefian recommended or mentioned, which was a miniature oleander, that will serve pretty quickly.
Okay.
One thing, just a clarification, Mr. Mayor, because you asked about the vines, we do have some fencing, as I indicated, that's going to be behind the bus shelters, we will still grow that to cover the fencing as well.
I'm just looking at the pictures of the flax leaf paper park, the western red bud that are indicated here, and I know that those trees aren't going to look like that if they're a two-foot box tree, anytime when I am still alive, so...
Red buds will take about a...
And that's assuming I have longevity.
Well, Mr. Mayor, we have a lot more flexibility with the shrubs and the ground cover. In a twenty-four-inch box tree, when you're planting it in essentially a three-foot area, it's not the tree itself, you're dealing with the root ball, that's where you get the situation where, we'd love to go to thirty-six inches, but that'll exceed where we can put it into the parkway. We have a lot more flexibility with the shrubs, we can go up to larger gallonage, try to get the biggest shrubs possible, biggest nursery stock we can find that allows us to work.
The reason I'm raising the issue over and over, and I'll stop now, but the reason I am is not so much because I think Mr. Galanian, I mean, Rubik knows what we're talking about, Mr. Zern, you know what we're talking about, what I'm speaking of, I'm saying it mainly to go on the record for this council, with regard to the public, that if they're expecting a lush garden out there, that is not what you're going to see anytime soon. You're going to see stuff that looks more or less like immature, newly planted, it's not going to cover up what you think it's going to cover up anytime soon.
Need a lot of miracle growth.
That's all I'm trying to say, so in terms of expectations, I just don't want to, you know, give the impression to the community. Mr. Quintero.
We're going to be planting hundreds of shrubs, how can we get an accurate price if we don't know whether we're doing twenty-five gallons or what type of sizes we're buying?
Well, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Quintero, on the fence option, we haven't discussed that completely with the contractor yet, so that we, that's where we may get the bigger gallonage on that shrub, I was talking about the very far to the rear shrub, and I think, as you may recall, I think it was you, Mr. Quintero, who recommended, we closed the planting space in as well, to try to get it to come together and grow up quicker, and we had included that in our last discussion with them. So, whether it's we put the jasmine closer together, we put the shrubs closer together, we did tell them we wanted to increase the number of overall plants. Then we'll work with them to see the largest gallonage we can get.
Well, the twenty-four-inch box trees, that's one issue, but for sure, the shrubs, if at least we have some good-sized shrubs going in, they're going to take off, hopefully in a matter of a few months, they'll fill in, and that'll give some green relief on the street.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Quintero, originally, we had a price from the contractor for five-gallon shrubs, there were almost twenty-three hundred of them, so we're just going to add the numbers, and fifteen-gallon vines, and we're going to have almost seven hundred of those. And also, the contractor's obligated to provide continuous maintenance for two years after completion of the project.
Why, the five gallons isn't that big, that's for sure.
Well, with the vines, we're not going to be purchasing as many vines, because we're not going to have the fencing, so we can turn that into larger shrubs, so we've got a little flexibility there.
Mr. Yusefian.
I would suggest that if you're going to do the miniature oleanders, instead of putting them ten foot apart, you may want to put them a little bit closer, like maybe seven foot apart, because I planted one, a five-gallon one, and it has doubled its size in one year. You have to water them in the beginning to get them established, after they get established, they're just basically maintenance-free, and that's one of the reasons I bought it, because I didn't want to maintain them. But I think one thing that, when I do landscaping, I go to landscaping place to buy my trees on twenty-four-inch boxes, you need to kind of ask the person, by the way, when are you going to transplant this to a thirty-six-inch box? You buy those, because the ones that are ready to be going into a thirty-six-inch box is, that's what you want to buy, because it's already, has taken all the twenty-four-inch box. I didn't do that the first time I bought a twenty-four-inch box, and what I ended up with was a fifteen-gallon that had just been planted into a twenty-four-inch box, so literally, I paid two hundred dollars for the box, the plant itself was only a fifteen-gallon, so you need to kind of, I fell for that old trick, but I'm smarter than an average bear, so I learned.
Mr. Zern.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Yusefian, we actually send staff down, they make the selection, we don't leave it up to the contractor. We'll go down to the nursery and tag every tree that we want, so we'll find not only the best species, but the largest as well. Still within the twenty-four-inch box range, as you said, you can get them when they're right to be moved up to the next size, but our staff picks them out, we don't leave that to the contractor.
And when you do that, could you also check across the street, there are several holes that are empty, the trees died, or that could be taken care of?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Yusefian, we have about forty trees, make it, those have all been ordered, and we're simply waiting for the season to replant those, but we will be on top of that.
We're watering recycled water?
Yes.
Life is good.
Let me make sure, we are on the tree wells, do we have recycled water in the irrigation for this project?
Yes, for this project.
All I saw was purple pipe everywhere.
Okay.
Move the items, Mayor.
Do we have a second? I have a motion and a second on two A and B. Can we do that? And B, okay. No, 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 we can't do it that way. Let's take the council motion, I'll assume that was for the council, all right. And Ms. Buchanan, could we call the roll on...
Councilmembers Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Yusefian.
Aye.
Mayor Draymond.
Yes.
Move B.
And for the agency.
Agency members Draymond.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Yusefian.
Aye.
And Chairman Najarian.
Yes.
Move adjourned for council.
Council is adjourned.
Move adjourned for GRI.
Second.
Agency is adjourned.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.